I would like to welcome everyone here to the October sixteenth Community Resources Meeting. We are very lucky to have our state senator here. But first, we should get this meeting to order. So Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
Counselor Elkins.
Here.
Counselor Mayori, of course, not with us yet, and Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Perfect. Well, this brings us to our public comment. I do not see any public in the building or on the internet. So it will be a very short public comment section. That being said, our next item is approval of the minutes of our last two meetings. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Laura, roll call.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. That passes. Next on the agenda are updates and announcements from committee members. Does anyone else have anything to share? No. Well, it is my great pleasure then to introduce everyone to our Senator Joe Comerford, who's going to do an update on some state-level actions and regional issues. I will come with all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the council members who are gathered here and online. I'm so grateful that you're taking a moment to have this conversation, and I appreciate you doing it in your committee, Mr. Chair. I, folks may know that the Senate convenes on Thursdays, and my team and I were mindful of not asking for the city council's time and then canceling and then asking again and canceling. We thought it might be disruptive. So thank you, Mr. President, for working that detail out and Mr. Chair for hosting. And I want to start by saying municipal work is the very hardest work in the Commonwealth. I see Counselor Nash shaking his head. I'm sure that sentiment is shared by all. There's just no comparison between what you all bear on your shoulders and what someone at the state or federal level bears. And that's because all politics is local, all policy and spending is local. It all comes down to our neighbors, and you are the embodiment of their concerns, hopes, and dreams in a way that, you know, folks at the state level or federal level, much as we try, you know, don't come, come close to the kind of intimacy and urgency and care, really, that deep, local-rooted care for our neighbors' concerns. So I have nothing but admiration, and my team and I hope to do better by the city of North Hampton and your work every day because we know how hard it is. And of course, I, you know, I also tip my hat to the school committee, also very hard. My wife, Ann, is putting her hat back in the ring there. But, you know, any municipal body, city council, school committee, volunteer boards and commissions, these are very hard jobs, and I'm so grateful for the service. You make the city go, and I happen to live here, so I'm your constituent. I'm actually Counselor Jarrett's direct constituent, and then, of course, the at-large counselors. I'm your constituent, and I'm very grateful for your service. The city's better for you. So I did put together, in true Virgo fashion, a little slideshow, which I will present with your okay.
Yes.
I think, let's make this, including the folks online, let's make this more of a conversation than me just presenting at you. And of course, I'll try to go through it expeditiously so that we can have your questions and comments at the end, as well as all throughout. Okay. And I should say that this comes, I am, I am meeting with each of the governing boards of the 25 cities and towns I represent. I'm in the back fifth, so we've completed most of these, and I find them extraordinarily important. I'll take copious notes, and, you know, again, we'll do better because I've heard directly from you. So this is our district. Some of you may know that in 2020, we had a census every 10 years. As a result of the census, Franklin, both Franklin County, but especially Berkshire County, lost significant population, and the Senate was faced with a choice. I was given, actually, a choice to take a map where North Hampton went over to North Adams, and, you know, the northern Berkshires up to Greenfield would have been my Senate district that I would have rerun in, or we could fight together to keep a seat. I voted to keep a seat because keeping a seat is keeping a Western Mass vote, a chairpersonship money in the district, rural sensibility, and I thought that was really important. Then Senator Ann Goby was important in that effort, and Senator Hines, Senator Lesser, now former colleagues, although then very much, you know, part of the team, we linked arms. And I'm very, along with Senator Vilas, of course, Senator Gomez, and I'm very happy that we were able to keep a seat. It did mean that the district went from looking like a gorgeous V to looking sort of something like an eagle, I like to think. So the, the end of that, the eastern tip in the northern belt is Winchendon. So I now stretch from North Hampton to Winchendon. That's about an hour and thirty-five, forty-five minutes, depending on Route Two traffic. Now, why is that important? Well, the district got bigger. We added a town. I added four towns in Worcester County, which makes my foothold there stronger, but also it really means I'm in a bigger geographic area. The district now stretches almost around the Quabon Reservoir. It's how big it is. So it's, it's, it's something for us to keep in mind if we continue to lose population, which I'd love to talk to you about, our governing districts for all of your state and federal people get bigger. And every time we add another hour on the road, right, that's an hour fewer that I have to be in person, right? If we think of it like that. Now, we try to stretch the day like you do, but there's something for us to think about. There's also that many more municipal boards I have to talk with, fire chiefs, police chiefs, school committees, and with each of those, you know, getting our arms around the issues in front of us becomes more complex. Now, I, I'm of a mind that our friends in Worcester County that are perhaps not as blue as North Hampton voters, although we know that our district has, you know, people on all sides of all issues, I think they're making me smarter every day because, you know, they won't, they are sometimes very different than North Hampton voters. And I think that's important for me to hear. It's just going to make me better at policy, having to see around an issue much more completely. So what am I doing this session? So I'm the Senate Chair of Higher Ed. I'm very grateful for these seats, by the way. I asked for these, and I'm grateful to the Senate President for giving them to me. I'm acting now Chair of Agriculture with Senator Goby's departure to be Rural Affairs Director. Woo-hoo, that's a good thing. I'm acting, no, I'm Assistant Vice Chair of Senate Ways and Means. I've been promoted to leadership. This is my third term, so I was glad for that. And then I asked to be on Economic Development and Racial Justice, both of those committees. I'm also on Rules and Global Warming and Climate Change. Global warming and climate change is not the Telecommunications Utility and Energy Joint Committee, where a lot of our bills that are consequential to North Hampton, like some of your home rules, are. But it is a Senate committee charged with things like the work I'm doing around carbon sequestration in buildings, that sort of the next generation from the Net Zero bill that I passed my first term. So it's good. It's good. They match what I think are my values, but also our shared values, right? I have to care about our economic development. I know you, like I, want to care about racial justice. Rules are where it's at, right, Jim? Congressman McGovern will tell us they're the least sexy committee that does the most work to shape what bills come to the floor, how they come to the floor, how debate has had, how transparency has had, right? So I, I really threw down this year on transparency and accountability in the Senate. I'm very proud of our Senate rules, and then, of course, the Global Warming Committee. So when I say "I" here, and I know you know this, but because you're my colleagues, I want you to see Jared Friedman as our Chief of Staff, Brian Rossman as Ledge Director, Elena Cohen, who probably you hear from most, as District Director. She's awesome. Rachel Klein does constituent work, and Caitlin Billings does communication engagement. Not every Senate office makes up the same, the committees, not committees, the office the same way, but, but I do. And I like this setup. I like our investment in engagement and communications and transparency through our website and emails and forums, and I like our real dedication to constituent service. This is a public service announcement. I love constituent services. I think it's some of the most important work we're going to do at a time where sometimes state government moves like cold molasses, dripping upside down in a bottle, you know? Like, so if you have, if you have issues, Counselor Elkins and I were just talking about this. If you have issues that require state and/or state, federal, or you need a nudge to our federal colleagues who I love, that's me. Text me, call me, send constituents my way. I'm proud of our record. We just closed, opened and closed 2,000 cases in our first four and a half years. That's a nice pace for our team. Many of these are in North Hampton. So we do municipal, regional, community business work. That's part of what we do. And that's everything from figuring out the grants to regulations, policies, laws that have to be changed, engagement with local and federal constituent services. We talked about policymaking. That's bills I file, including your home rule petitions that you send us. But Rep Sabados takes a lead as a House member, but, you know, we have a role to play, although not as heavy a lift in the Senate as the reps have because they lead off. So I tip my hat there, but I, you know, if I'm sleeping at the job, it's not a good thing. So we don't do that. We, we attend to your home rules with you. So I file bills. You care about the bills that come to the floor that are not my bills. So I engage on them on North Hampton's behalf as well as pushing my agenda. My agenda is your agenda. I get ideas for what bills to file from you, actually. The, the issues that you, this council, certainly Mayor Shara, and I should have mentioned Mayor Shara in my opening remarks. I have the highest regard for the mayor. You know, I get ideas. My agenda is grounded deeply in the 25 communities I represent. Of course, budget and bond bills. I'm, I am like the Lady Macbeth of budgeting, meaning I really am ambitious. I don't, hopefully, I don't go as far as Lady Macbeth did, but what I mean to say here is, you know, I really believe, and I'm going to, I'll show you a partial list of what I've been able to bring home. Part of my job is money. It's both getting you access to budget dollars in the form of state line items. And I think we're going to talk about that, for example, the Department of Community Care and how the heck we're going to continue to fund that and the Equitable Approaches to Public Safety grant, which is currently funding it. And then also the earmarks. Earmarks are small compared to the vast billions, but still, I have a role to play to prioritize communities like North Hampton. And bond bills, which we can go into at greater depth if you're interested, they're tricky business, but they do yield. Bond bills are a little bit smoke and mirrors, meaning they're part of a process. And if you want a bond earmark, it's my job to get one for you, but it's not in any way guaranteed. But it is a puzzle piece in a large labyrinth of puzzle pieces that we bring together. Here's an example, the French King Bridge. We just were up at the French King Bridge to commemorate suicide barriers being put up. And it was very poignant and very moving and really long process in getting those done. And I had a puzzle piece to bring, right? I had to work with our colleagues at Mast dot to prioritize this, among many other priorities, and then I had to secure a $3 million bond line item so that if they needed to, they could borrow against it to get the work done. So it itself wasn't released, but Mast dot knew it had it in its back pocket. So it's part of an overall strategy that I work with, with communities. In those cases, it was Irving and Gill with Northfield as a, as a partner. And then, of course, communications and engagement. I should say, all my votes are online. Every single letter I write is online unless it's too like a, an application for a job for an intern, you know, or, you know, individual recommendations for students I don't put online, but every other piece of correspondence I write. And that's because I think you should know who I'm writing to, why I'm writing them, because you may not agree with me, and then I should hear from you. You should also know every single vote I take. They have to be public to you. So anyway, they're all there, plus a bunch of other things that are regular updates. And we do other things like town halls and stuff like that. Okay, so, you, you know, thinking about the money, we have passed this $56.5 billion budget. We did, as part of that, include $1 billion in fair share money. As you know, when we were campaigning in North Hampton, fair share was slated, you know, two summers ago, last summer, rather, no. Two summers ago. It was slated to be $2 billion, and I believe we will get to $2 billion. I do. They, this was a conservative estimate for this budget, and we'll see it, I think, we'll, we'll see us, I predict, having to go back and appropriate more money because we can't do anything but spend fair share money on transportation and education. One thing to know about fair share money is when it was initially before the legislature, and I voted on that in constitutional conventions before it went to the ballot. When it was initially before the legislature and we were doing what was called the Student Opportunity Act, we thought that fair share would be needed to pay for Chapter 70 general funds. That is not the case. Our budget currently is robust enough to encompass all education spending. So, for example, fair share in this cycle was used for things like universal free school meals, right? So that $168 million, for example, was part of that. And of course, some of that is benefiting North Hampton, as well as every other school district in the Commonwealth. So, you know, it's, it is difficult to get our minds sometimes around, around fair share as, as an entity, but, you know, the $1 billion we're spending is very small compared to the overall budget. So I, in my mind, tried to put it into perspective, and it's also, again, really important for us to know that it was initially to pay for the Student Opportunity Act. We do not need that now because our general fund is robust enough. And then we did this tax package you may have heard about. The tax package was, in some ways, controversial. And in the end, it's, when it gets fully funded, it's going to be about $1.1 billion in tax expenditures, meaning, you know, we won't get that revenue. However, some of that goes, is revenue that goes directly to the rainy day fund. So the short-term capital gains tax that we gave a cut to goes directly to the rainy day fund. That's where that capital gains revenue goes to. So it's not a direct on-budget expenditure loss, but I care about rainy day. I know you do, too. So it's something for us to be really mindful of that. As you know, that was an up or down vote by me because it was a conference committee. The Senate passed our version of the tax cuts, didn't include some of the, I'll call them more egregious, tax cuts for the wealthy. I, I do not favor them, but in the end, there was a compromise bill between House and Senate, and that's how it went. There is a lot of relief for working and low-income people that I'm very proud of, including for elders and students, renters. Very proud of that. And you can see it on a blog. I detail on SenatorComerford.org, a blog on that. So this is a little bitly I made for the council. Hi, Counselor. This is a little bitly I made for the counselor with all of the bills I filed. There are summaries available for all of those bills, and I'll make sure that Laura gets this presentation so she can get it out to the council. I see you shaking your head, Laura. But suffice to say, I focus, again, where you focus. Education, climate, healthcare, economic development, affordable housing, transportation. Those are the places that I have, I have focused. So, for example, in education, I focus on special education a great deal, and that's in part because it's a piece of reform that is very sorely lagging, and shame on us for having an assumed threshold for special education students rather than allowing municipalities to count actual special education students. There is not one district in the Senate district, not one school district in the Senate district with special education levels below, at or below 16%. 16 is the new threshold. That means that any delta is paid for by the municipality, and that's money that the municipality doesn't have to do other things. Now, I could use your help with some of the issues that we're going to talk about tonight. Every time you raise your voice as a council, which you do beautifully and often, it is useful because I can go to Senate leadership and say, look, this is, you know, a large city I represent, and this is the council's voice. Of course, I focus on climate resilience and mitigation. I did a lot of work with solar in the last session successfully, thanks to people like Jonathan Wright, who pointed the way to blocks and solar development up at Hospital Hill. It was called Single Tax Parcel. Jonathan said, this is what single tax parcel is. My head exploded with the complexity. We wrote a bill and we passed it, and now it's going to be more effective and efficacious for individual homeowners on Hospital Hill to put solar on their house. They're going to get the benefits of net metering once we can wrest it out of the DPU's hands. But it'll happen, and then we hope that it'll be more North Hampton homeowners on single tax parcels like Hospital Hill will be able to get solar on their roofs and get the benefit. So we did a bunch of things like that. Healthcare equity, I have focused almost exclusively lately. Of course, I support Medicare for All, which I know many of you do, and many of the important healthcare reforms, but because I was public health chair for two sessions, I focused on the glaring absence of cogent, funded by the state, not only by the locality, which is what it was before COVID, set of standards and training and protocols for public health across the Commonwealth. We knew we didn't have them when COVID hit, and we saw the racial and economic disparities and how COVID hit populations, and shame on us, really, for knowing that inequity and not doing anything about it for so long. So I have a bill that I pray is coming to the floor that will completely transform public health. And I've been focused on the funding, you know, inching it up, including an override of Governor Healy, respectfully done, override of Governor Healy's veto of public health back to get it back to 15 million, which is meaningful for North Hampton. So I focus there, and of course, economic development, there's a bunch there. But I'll take your questions on all of this and move to the next slide. We, Jared and Elena and I, it's too small. You might want to look behind you, Counselor. Laura, on the screen, I'm sorry for this. Jared, Elena, and I combed through our budget appropriations since 2019, and with the question, you know, what have we done that's helped North Hampton? And we, this is a partial list of the money that we've secured. I will just say that, you know, it looks like, for example, and, you know, kudos to North Hampton Chamber of Commerce. Vince Jackson said yes all the way through COVID, and he was able to be the conduit for money getting through the chamber to numbers of entities that needed it, to, you know, direct support for Grow Food North Hampton, direct support for the marketing of Valley Flyer. Before it was a done deal, it was a pilot, and I used to say I had nothing to do with getting this pilot. I had everything to do with getting it secured and locking it. And so our team facilitated weekly for Jared Friedman, and thank God, his young, meetings. And then they became bimonthly, and then monthly with Amtrak and Mast dot. And I secured money for the marketing campaign so that we could produce the ridership to demonstrate to Amtrak and Mast dot that, in fact, there was reason to think this service should become permanent. Of course, there are entities here, you know, Children's Advocacy Center, which is up in Florence, David Ruggles Center. The Department of Community Care was directly to the city. I think it was $150,000. That was when Mayor Narcoitz was first introducing it, and it was a budget hole. We were able to help fill that before the Department of Community Care got the Equitable Approaches to Public Safety money. The Dial South, of course, that's across the street from Smith Vocational, Five Franklin. And here, I would like to, you know, just commend the city's own commitment to Five Franklin, your commitment, the mayor's commitment, and it was, you know, I felt really happy to be. I think we got about $168,000 for that to help when, when Dr. Bossy was putting together the funding. So, you know, I wanted to back North Hampton's commitment. The Safe Havens program is needed, about $422,000 to be able to increase. The Safe Havens is low-threshold housing, so it's really important entry housing for folks, especially who are currently houseless. And it's, it allows for substance use, and it allows for lots of comorbidities. It's really quite an important housing, and we, we didn't have enough of it in the region. So I'll let you just, I'll let you look at this list, but it just represents both, again, direct payments to the city and also just services in the city or nonprofits in the city that are quite important to us. The Seven Sisters Midwifery is among the most recent, and that was $250,000 for their doula program. They can pilot doulas, which is thrilling. And, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative, I know you are, too, of Seven Sisters' work, the only freestanding birthing center in the Commonwealth currently. And of course, the loss of Kirsten is tragic, but we'll stay with them as they build back. And then, of course, there's support for the region. This is a very small list. This is just the, some of the lines that I know you've, the mayor's talked to me about, or some of you have talked to me about over time, and we can go into greater detail there. And then, let's see. Oh, yep, okay. And then this is just regional work and issues. So, you know, as you might imagine, right, a Senate office, 25 cities and towns, five staff, plus me, we have a role to play. I really do think of that as a role to play for, like, catching bigger issues and trying to, you know, work with great, great colleagues. It's totally fine. Great colleagues on everything from regional rail, which we're working on now. There was a rail commission, Rep Sabados and I were both on it, along with Rep Blay. The report is coming out, and, you know, I, I think we know what it's going to say. It's going to say that Mast dot's doing a lot of work, and we have to figure out this, how we're going to monitor and how we're going to run regional rail, right? Right now, there are four rail projects in the Commonwealth, in our part of the Commonwealth. There's the Valley Flyer, north-south. There's the Southern Tier from Pittsfield. There's the Berkshire Flyer, which hooks up seasonal service, although I think the folks in the Berkshire would like it to not be seasonal. And then there's the Northern Tier. And the Northern Tier is a bill I passed. It's my first bill I passed. The study is actually clipping along, and it's, we're going to have a meeting this week. You'll get an invitation to a public meeting. It's pretty exciting, some of the alternatives. These are not, we're not at war with each other, right? We're four counties. We deserve to be networked, north, south, east, west. You know, a penny of our sales tax goes to the MBTA, every one of ours. I'm really favoring keeping that penny, but we have, regardless, we have a right to robust regional RTA and rail service. So things like that. We have a micro-transit pilot up in Franklin County that we've funded through earmarks twice. That's very exciting that I hope to talk to PVTA about because sometimes we can't send the big old buses, but we can send zippy little Ubers, public Ubers, I call them. You know, so I think these are hopefully good, robust, useful things that we can do. And then, of course, you've got lots of priority issues that we've been privileged, and that's just, just a few of them up there. The mayor and Alan and Annie, you know, are really quite wonderful at, at being able to convey to my office, you know, the ways in which we should be jumping in to help North Hampton. We have regular monthly meetings with the mayor and Alan. They bring department heads as needed. We have packed agendas, and we work through them, and it's everything from, you know, what the heck, how are we going to hold Coca-Cola responsible? And so we've, you know, worked with Congressman McGovern, and of course, Lieutenant Governor and the Economic Development Secretary, you know, at the mayor's direction, to, you know, how are we going to pay for channel markers now that the vendor is changing the pricing structure because of a transfer of ownership of that company to flood relief, to, you know, speed limits in front of North Hampton High School, you know, which was a conversation with Mast dot, where it, we're like, where Patty Levenworth, who's the director of D2, who is a wonderful person, was like, yeah, to Donna, why can't we do that? We can do that, right? So sometimes it's, it's nothing more than a conversation. Sometimes it's a piece of legislation. Sometimes it's more than that, a meeting, but it's, you know, these are different, different pieces of work that we've been engaged in, just some of the ones that North Hampton, through the mayor, has brought to us. And again, I really commend the mayor for her advocacy. And then, this is super quick. You guys know that legislation works along a two-year cycle. So the budget, the bills that you filed as a city, the bills that you care about, that I filed, any other bill is chugging along on this two-year cycle. I wish I could say that this session, we've been more productive than, than I can tell you right now, but there's still time. than, than I can tell you right now, but there's still time. So again, your advocacy is, I'm very grateful for. We should, we should, this, because it's, it'll be the second year of a two-year session. By January 31st of 2024, we should conclude all really meaningful business. We'll still work all the way through it, but it's something for us all to, it's a clock that's in my head that I can't get out. And then the state budget process, this is just coming to you. Just so you know, right now, the agencies are sending the governor their budgets for fiscal year 25, which will pass and beside, you know, will be law, God willing, by July 1st of 2024, right? So as North Hampton thinks about your own advocacy for the things that are important, you know, it's good, and again, I can help with this, to begin now talking to state colleagues for the programs that you think are the most important to the city. Because they will then begin putting their budgets together to give it to Governor Healy for her budget, which will be out in January. And the whole process begins anew. And then this is our contact information, again, our cells and our emails. And this will come to Laura for the council. And, and this is our office. So it's room 410 and you should come anytime. So, yep, that's us, that's me waving right there. So with that, I'm sorry that I didn't pause long enough for you to ask any questions, but I'm happy to have them now.
Yeah, I, I can get us rolling here. So first of all, thank you for that update. You are quite busy yourself. And, and I, I speak for all of us here. You've done, from the, the day you were elected, you've been in motion and getting stuff done. And, and, oh.
Thank you. And getting stuff done on, thank you. On a big level and on a local level. So I want to thank you personally for the work you did with me around the signage at Coca-Cola.
Yep.
That we had a lot of problems with the trucks, we still do. But Senator Commerford helped open up communications with Mast dot. And, and we were able to get new signage on the exit ramp to direct the trucks towards Damon Road. Senator Commerford was also really helpful in terms of we had trains that would come in idle. They would park because it, it's a long story, but the, the trains could sit there all weekend idling over right off of Holly Street next to the lumberyard and just, you know, two, two engines rumbling and billowing all its diesel. And she helped us alleviate that. And that, and that the Senator was really helpful. We had a discussion with Mast dot, with Donna Lascalia, that related to our discussion about lowering speed limits. And you're talking about lowering speed limits at the high school. I mean, that discussion is ongoing. And so just thank you, you know, you're, you're, you're up in the clouds with all of these big bills, but down, you know, that you're available to us at the local level for, you know, just these. These are actually really big things for the constituents in Ward Three. And, and I really appreciate all of the help on that.
Well, your leadership there made it possible, right? You know, a great leader will say, hey, this is the call you have to make. I know that's real, right? It's real, it's part of what's true about the partnership, right? You know, I'm, I can't, I wouldn't have heard that potentially. But as it turns out, I do understand the idling problem because we have it in Royalston. So I knew what I had to ask for, for there. And it is a real problem, right? These engines take upwards of six to eight hours to turn off and then six to eight hours to turn back on. And this is why we need electric trail, electric rail, you guys. But this is a, this is, this is a problem. And so rail companies often think it's more sound to keep them running. And it's truly tricky, right? Because you can sort of intellectually understand what they're going through. But it's not if you're breathing it or hearing it for an.
It's just really bizarre to see a train just sitting there. Ready to go, hit the gas.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for your service there. Those things like, those are, those are good examples. They weren't on the list, right? The list, it's been five years, so you'd imagine there were more than what I showed you there. And North Hampton is quite expert, both city councillors and the mayor and your division heads, really expert at chunking out an issue and then going over there. You go to that problem. And that's exactly how it works in its best form, this partnership that we have.
So my question has, so Counselor Dennis Bidwell years ago was talking about doing this with our state reps. And here we are finally getting. But I, I, I encourage, you know, the, the next council to more routinely do just sort of this. And I, I think through the community resources, through our committee structure, it works better because we kept getting stuck and trying to how, how to have the Senator come to our council meeting. And I would look at the agenda and I'm just like, oh my God, or you know, are its budget season? I think this is a really reasonable way to do it. And, but with the idea of having a discussion about, you know, what is it we can get behind that you're working on? I, I, when we have resolutions or take positions on things, Peter would always tell us how important it is to have that resolution in his back pocket to, to show it to his, you know, his colleagues on the floor. And so what do you got? What are, what are, like three big bills that you would like us to like get behind?
So first of all, thank you for raising this. So I'm in to come regularly. We can schedule this now, I will come whenever you want me to. No, it's real, it's real. This is unbelievably useful to me, right? Because if we have a working relationship, then I can better serve the place I love, right? So it's totally great. And I like this too. You'll know better whether it's works for you all, so I defer. And are you talking about Rep Kokot would say that it was important?
He, he, that, that, that when we team up between the local legislature and with our state reps, that, you know, that we're all, when we're all pulling in the same direction and.
It's totally true.
Can we help?
So here's how it works, right? Here's how it works. I say to the Senate President, Senate President, look at these people from North Hampton. This is what they're asking me for. And she can understand that. The Chair of Ways and Means can understand that different from my heart thinks that we should do this. Or, you know, even research that tells me that it's an important thing. So, you know, among, among the issues, I'll give you a couple of issues that I think are among the top more potentially interesting issues for North Hampton. One is a municipal building bill that I have filed. I don't believe, I believe the state has to have a stake in municipal buildings. And that's everything from the DPW salt shed to fire stations. North Hampton has it better, even though your budget is aching than most, right? But still you have a tax base that has some economic, you know, oomph to it. And you're great stewards of that. But this would create something like the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, or the MBLC, the Library Commission. And it would have a state have a stake in municipal buildings. I think we can do it. I proposed a pay for for this, which is taking some of the marijuana excise tax before it hits the general fund. It is an expenditure because that all goes to the general fund. But I'm, I'm suggesting in this legislation that we divert it as a pay for, we always need a pay for. So that's one thing. Two, we have been trying to pass state action for a local public health excellence, SAFE grant, the bill, sorry. We passed one during COVID and that's what has set up the public health excellence grants that North Hampton now administers, right? You are, thanks to Commissioner O'Leary, you are a district. That's now being funded for the first time, God help us, right? We did allow zip codes to determine public health protections before COVID, to our shame, right? Now we have skin in the game. I was, I'm proud to have, I'm proud to be part of the fight for that skin. But we need a bill that codifies it. So that bill has passed public health for the, I don't know, 55th time. It was vetoed by our former governor in his misguided sense, Governor Baker. It was vetoed while he, in his last moments as governor. So we need municipalities to say we need to pass SAFE into law. It's a very, I mean, Commissioner O'Leary really wants SAFE. It would just codify the stuff that she's doing and the state's doing, and it would lock in state funding. So that's the second bill that I think would be particularly germane to North Hampton. Another, another area of advocacy as you gear up for this budget, it's not necessarily a bill, but it doesn't matter, is the equitable approaches to public safety, the EEPs money. So your Department of Community Care is being funded through EEPs. And this is one of those moments, right? So you probably know this, initially, the city wasn't funded for the Department of Community Care. I thought that was a total head scratcher because your process was so profound. I'm glad for Amherst, Amherst was funded, but we asked DPH to sit with North Hampton, right? And Elena went through the, you know, with DPH to understand where, where they were either not understanding North Hampton's case or whether, or where North Hampton could perhaps make a stronger case in DPH's mind, right? We had to hear it. And I was glad that, you know, DPH funded and then funded again the equity, you know, the Department of Community Care. We had, we invited the Commissioner recently to come out and was hosted. Commissioner Goldstein was hosted here beautifully by Meredith and her team and the mayor. And Amherst came over and, because we're two of the only non-police crisis response in the Commonwealth, to the credit of the municipalities. But this money isn't guaranteed. So you know, in the last, I think you know this county, City Council President, that in the last budget from Governor Healy, for some reason, she didn't fund EEPs at all, not at all. The House funded it at 200,000. This would have been devastating for North Hampton, which gets about 400 and, I think this is right, 70, 50,000. So it's, you know, not nothing, as they say in budgeting. And so we were able to rectify that in the Senate. I, you know, that was one of my priority line items. And, you know, it's about like 3.6 million now, still not enough. So we have to make the case for the governor that equitable approach and, and the Commissioner, Commissioner Goldstein, that equitable approaches to public safety is making a huge difference in North Hampton for the Department of Community Care. And that North Hampton is one of the only municipalities doing straight up non-police crisis response, mental health first crisis response. And did it in partnership, you know, with Chief Casper, with then Chief Daven, right? Like there was a beautiful partnership that happened that it could be a model for the Commonwealth.
And activists calling, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I think that's an important component of our, of this city and how.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it came out of a very robust process. You know, and this is happening across the state. And so, but it's still not solidified in the administration, clearly, because the governor, you know, it wasn't in the governor's budget. And then, you know, so right now, it's really in there only because of the Senate. And that's not where North Hampton wants it going forward. So those are three ideas of many of where you could be very powerful. Let's get this budget out of, let's get the bill to fund municipal buildings out of committee. Let's finally pass the state action for local public health excellence. And let's, let's really urge the governor to incorporate the equitable approaches to public safety into her idea of mental health, public health, public safety. Those three things are, you know, three of, um, team where North Hampton is uniquely poised, I think, to say something. You're uniquely poised for public health because Meredith is a rock star. And you're running a region, you're uniquely poised for EEPs because you're doing the work that is now stipulated. We changed Javier Luango Garrido was actually instrumental in helping me get, and he's a North Hampton constituent. He got, he worked with our team to get the right language that would privilege North Hampton. Meaning I, we had to make sure that co-response is important in the whole continuum, but it's not non-police crisis response. And so co-response is funded out of DMH. This is funded out of DPH, all the acronyms. And so we had to get, we had to privilege the mental health crisis response in the language. And Javier, Javier worked with me to get that. So we got that passed in the Senate and then we got it funded. But it, it needs to be, like, it needs to not just hang on the person in the Senate, right? We, we want that more, we want the governor and the DPH Commissioner to think, yeah, this is like important stuff. Now, I think Commissioner Goldstein was wowed when he came here. And I think that the mayor recently wrote him a gorgeous level, a gorgeous level, gorgeous letter, when the Department of Community, Community Care was stood up. And she sent him this report and it was really beautiful. But still, there's work for the city council to do.
Um, I'm, I'm sitting here listening and I'm wondering that we can head to, to, to next term. And I'm wondering if it makes sense for council to consider adding the, uh, uh, an appointment as a liaison. Maybe asking to be in some of these meetings in the mayor's office, you know, to, to the legislative, to the legislature. Because I think, I, because I, it's exactly right. And, and it's not always the, um, the, the mayor's office is balancing so much, but I can say for my part, I've, when I've had, I've had a couple of opportunities now to, to testify on, on, on bills. And it was one of the things that I think is, that is happening in the city is really great is that the NESC is really good about, we have just great, you know, it's our constituent, she's not even on the commission, Adele Frank's like keeps us totally.
She is a rock star.
She's a rock star. And, and, and she, she's able to tell us what's going on and what's important to, you know, to, to, to weigh in on and for that commission's work. And it's, it's charged. And I think that, that level of involvement and, and understanding what's going on at the legislative, at the state level with somebody ready, even if it's not the liaison who always would necessarily go and fill in that role. But to say, we, we're there, we will write the letter, we will testify, we will do that. And, and it, it is also worth noting that I think often the, the sort of council prerogative when there's consensus is, you know, I, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're a group, we're, we're not a single voice. So we may not always agree or speak with one voice. And our council prerogative may not always exactly match the mayor's. But within that, there's still a role, I think, to advocate. And, and I think there's a way to do it without getting, stepping on people's feet and, and, you know, making sure all sides are heard and facilitating. And where there is consensus, especially making sure that we're bringing all the tools to bear and, and going and speaking to these issues. I, I do think that councillors, at the legislative level, the municipal level, bring something to the conversation that the, the executives, that's different than the executive function when they come and speak, so.
Oh, infinitely true, right? Like you are, you have great gravitas in hearings. Because I think many, many of my colleagues at the state level believe what I do, that your job is harder than anybody's here. And I would welcome, I mean, I will defer to Mayor Shara in terms of the setup. But I would welcome a closer relationship with the council completely. And whether that's, you know, appointing someone to come to these mayor meetings or actually having a separate meeting with me, depending on what works better, that's terrific. And then, you know, Elena really is pretty good at getting out where, where we think the opportunities are the most acute or, or urgent. We do try to get them out to, to city councillors or select boards. But, you know, that person could perhaps listen for those or meet with us, you know, so we could work it out. So the answer is yes, if the council wishes, I think it would be super great to do that.
I think that would be great. I get those, I get the emails from Elena. My sense is, is they go out to all of us. And so I, I think there's a little bit of a, well, is this, is this just to me? Like who's going to pick up this ball and run with it? Is it, and it might, within our body, make sense to, to, to have somebody be like, that's, that's, that's our ball to pick up or, or to delegate or to discuss if, if we are gonna, you know, do anything about it and maybe kind of make a, make a point of it.
I love it.
Centralize that.
Council Mayor.
Well, now I have kind of a question, but now I'm thinking. Thing, idea, yeah, maybe somehow like we'll talk about it, but chairs or some, because I was thinking each committee actually has. A vested interest, like, you know, NESC. As, as you've seen. We utilize Adele Franks to play that role sometimes informally, but like each committee kind of has its own vested interests. So we'd have to think about that, but that's quite interesting. But yeah, so connected, I was, you know, I've always been curious, Senator, about. Your experience, the experience from your end of home rule petitions. Sometimes I feel almost sheepish about it, like, you know, it's like a credit rating and we keep pinging it and it's like a headache for you. I just was curious how it, how it plays out for you when you have to carry out something that we initiate basically.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah.
There's no end to your credit here, right? You're going to have that, um, that metaphor. It's a, uh, so, you know, I think of home rules is actually one of the more important pieces of work. Because that's you as city councillors or select boards telling the legislature, hey, you guys, like, we gotta get this done. And unfortunately, we need you to let us do it, right? I'm thinking a lot along with, you know, great house members about what to do, for example, of these age extensions, which. Are troubling, you know, to me and because I, I don't think it's really. I think 65 is the new 45 as I approach 65. So like, so, but that's one thing, but, um, but I just, I think we could do better at. Helping municipalities not have to come to us all the time for these home rules. But that aside. I, the home rules are great, home rules are, are important. They, you are telling the legislature what you need to do your business. And that's fine. Sometimes, as you know. Northampton is ahead of a lot of the state. So for example, uh, with, um, non-citizen voting in municipal elections. I support that personally, I, I supported the charter's work. I was proud to be in the city when that happened, I'm proud to have the home rule. And the legislature's not there yet, you know, so that's painful to have, to think that. We may not be able to move that simply because the legislature isn't where Northampton is. But by Northampton saying publicly, this is where we are. You are signaling to some other communities that are similar. And or signaling to the Senate leadership that it, and House leadership, that it needs to understand that not all. Communities are of the 351 are the same, and that's very useful. Because again, you know, and if you think about democracy as the most beautiful bottom up, like people to us. At the municipal level, to the state, to the federal government, you know, when Northampton signals through an, an official body. That you have an official position. That's amazing. And everything you do to crow about that and speak about it publicly and push us in the legislature. Is really important. It's very important. Again, I, I, you know, I'm sure Rep Sabadosa joins me in wishing we could pass. Some of these reforms that you're asking for and we will, you know, we'll keep pushing. Cause you're going to tell us to keep pushing.
Well, it's true, we have a lot of harmony here. I, I guess it would be more painful for you if we were playing really ridiculous home petitions for it. So perhaps, perhaps that makes it easier, but I do feel like what's challenging from the council level is the, the timeframe. So sometimes a sponsor will not like no longer be serving by the time, you know, it rolls around. So for me, it's maintaining my attention, if I introduce a home rule petition, making sure that I keep following it. And Elena's been, is very responsive and very proactive and I really appreciate that. So anyway, um, anything about that process that we, you think we could, um, kind of improve on? I'm always open to hearing about.
Well, I mean, it is, it's a long arc. But, you know, again, and I, I think you, Council Mayor, I think I said this before you came in, which is, you know, house members have a bigger lift. In home rules, so I, you know, I, I recognize Rep Sabadosa's work because they often, not always, but. Almost always go in on the house side first and that's, you know, we have, again, I said, we have a role to play. Like I can't be snoozing. Through these and I hopefully am a good partner. But, you know, going in on the house side is, you know, a disproportionate lift.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a note to ask Rep Sabadosa that question too, because I've been curious about it. It's one of the few times we generate something really truly from the ground level. And it's, and I don't know how it feels on every other level.
Yeah.
So that's interesting, thank you.
You know, last year you filed 10 home rules, four passed and one became unnecessary following the election law bill. So it's basically, um, five, the, the legislature acted on 50% of what Northampton wanted. That's not bad odds.
Is that a good average?
It's not bad compared to some other of the communities I represent. This year you have eight in so far. And so far means that I welcome more of them. And. And they're doing well in terms of hearings, you know, we always want to see them click through the process. But, you know, they are welcome as far as I'm concerned. It's your, it's your right to exercise, um, your request of the state.
Do we exercise it more than other communities?
Yes, but you're bigger than some of the other communities I represent. I mean, here's a, here's just a quick sidebar on democracy, right? So I have community, I have colleagues, you know, who represent, uh, you know, a set of blocks in Boston. Right? Their home rules are weenie compared to the number of home rules I have. And in the Senate, I am looking at this with the Senate President, I do worry about representation. Because as the district gets bigger and the square miles gets bigger, the number of people doesn't get bigger. It's like 175, 180 roughly, um, per, uh, a thousand per senator. But the number of like touches grows. The number of home rules grows and. That's just, I think we have to be aware of that, awake of that, you know, to the Western Mass Senators. Cause if we're not, we could get ourselves into a position where our districts are so large. That we are not able to do the same kind of quality service that some other senators do. Because they have, you know, a tiny geographic area, one police chief, one fire, you know, one fire chief, something like that, you know, it's just real. And a quicker commute, right? So the, there's things I'm watching, um, in terms of just the. Again, this is why we should all care about population loss in West, it's one of the things, reasons besides economics. That we should care about population losses, the democracy factor for us.
Thank you. I'm really appreciating this conversation and especially those, those bills that you're, uh, want us to, to advocate with you on. I wanted to circle back to education.
Yeah.
Some things you mentioned there. First, do you happen to know the percentage of special education that Northampton? Has at, you know, compared to that 16%.
Yes, I do, I'm going to look that up councillor, I should have had it on the tip of my tongue.
I, I feel like it's something I should know. But the, my, so my question is, yeah, where, where are we in that? But you, you also mentioned that, you know, chapter 70 funds, that we funded all of that through. The regular budget and not through the fair share amendment. But I think we all know that it's, that it's certainly insufficient for Northampton.
Yes.
And, and how much of that is about special education? Cause I know we have a disproportionate, uh, you know, a higher number than others. And. How? It's a perennial question, how can we get? The legislature, the governor to recognize the situation that Northampton is in? And how can we help you advocate for that?
So I'm so glad you raised that and it was in my notes and I didn't touch on it enough councillor Jared. So. As you all know, the Student Opportunity Act, which we passed in 2019 was long overdue, right? Education reform was 25 years before, God help us. And it really had languished school spending. And I voted yes, just so you know, for the Student Opportunity Act, I would vote yes again. And. That bill disproportionately helped low income, high immigrant. High poverty, uh, high community of color. Schools, right? It privileges those communities, that had to happen, had to happen. Because really like public health, you know, was, we were trying to fix that with my bill, the. Uh, safe bill, state action for local public health excellence, the Student Opportunity Act. Was trying to address the fact that zip codes were determining the quality of students' public education, right? Because, um, we didn't have a foundation budget or a process that would allow the state to have a bigger skin in the game. So that's important and it was important. And there were a cohort, there are a cohort of schools, including districts like Northampton. And then all of the rural schools. Like Amherst, Mohawk, Pioneer, that were completely left out of the huge gains of the Student Opportunity Act. They're getting some gains, right? Some gains, but they're not getting the kind of meteoric gains. That Springfield, Chelsea, Fall River, Brockton, uh, places that I think, I'm, I think I know you all well enough to know. We all want these districts to get more state money, we're all better when there is, you know, racial and economic justice. So, you know. So. A, a little while ago, um, I brought out Secretary Pat Totweiler, who is just a wonderful man. He's the new education secretary, Governor Healy's education secretary, he's a wonderful guy. And, um, he and his folks came out and I partnered with the Collaborative for Educational Services to have him out. And the mayor met him at Bridge Street and, um, and it was a beautiful visit. And one of the reasons I felt such urgency to bring him was because. Northampton has long been understood to not benefit as fully. From the Student Opportunity Act, and yet we don't have a good fix yet for why that is. So let's table that for a second. The other thing that's happening with Northampton is. So Northampton is classically called a minimum aid district, right? It's a minimum aid district. What does that mean? It means that in ed reform, Northampton can't get less chapter 70 money. Chapter 70 is how we fund the foundation budget, the state's portion, than it did the year before. That's good. But it, what has happened is that it has told a sort of almost a false story to the city council and mayors. Over time, it said basically you're going to get this minimum aid, but it hasn't told you. That your declining population is such that. As the Student Opportunity Act is rolled in. It is being undercut by what's called a buffer. Actually, I'm going to do something a little bit crazy, but I'm going to draw a graph for all of you. Is that okay, Mr. Chair? It's actually, it's, it's impossible, it's impossible to actually see this unless we see this on a graph. All right. So, um, this is a terrible graph. This is, uh, population and this is dollars, right? So here's your minimum aid and minimum aid over time has been going up. But only slightly, like 1%, 2%, not like inflation. So it's bananas, not.
Can you put your camera on, on your screen?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
What a good idea councillor. No, minimum aid is calculated per student.
Oh, there you go.
So this is your minimum aid, so it's been going up a little, little, little bit, right? Your population has been declining, like last year, our schools, not your, mine, right? My kids are in Northampton Public Schools. Um, well, one's in Smith Vocational now, but my son is in the high school. So our population has been declining, that's because of a number of things. Population of students writ large, um, the impact of homeschooling, the impact of charters, like, we know this, right? We, we understand this, you guys know this better than I do. So that's been going down, but you haven't seen. You haven't seen the impact because you're a minimum aid district. So enter Student Opportunity Act, right? Where we're starting to see this, see, the problem is I can't see my drawing unless I've got my glasses on. We're starting to see this, this increase in spending. But we've got this thing called, I've talked to the mayor about this, a hold harmless buffer. So we've got this thing called a hold harmless buffer that's increased over time. Because, um, we've lost kids, but you've still been getting the minimum amount. We've still been getting the minimum amount. So we've got this buffer, so the Student Opportunity Act money. Has to eat through, hold harmless. Um, so think of it like a big Pac-Man, right? It has to chomp, 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 chomp all the way through this buffer. Now, um, in districts like. Brockton, you know, Student Opportunity Act was meteoric, right? It went up, you know, it went up by leaps because things like, um, income, things like immigrant status. Immigration status were considered in the algorithm. So the algorithm is 12 points, Northampton is five or six, I think you're six. So right in the middle, so it's neither like no gain or meteoric. It's like this slow chug, not slow, but it's a chug. And it's over seven years, some of it's over seven years, some of it's over five years. So it's still getting implemented. So even as it's still getting implemented, you are, we are seeing this hold harmless buffer. So it's increasing in theory, but it hasn't broken through the minimum aid. Whereas, you know, if districts were increasing population, then you would, excuse me, be minimum aid districts. And Student Opportunity Act would just be rocketing up from there. Instead, we're eating, Pac-Man is eating through this buffer. That's a problem, right? There are some districts, I'm here to tell you, in our, some school districts, in our senate district. Where probably unless we fix the Student Opportunity Act, which is, I, I want to fix it with special education. We'll never, they'll never make it through, their minimum aid buffer is so great. But every time we, this district loses a kid. We risk that that buffer becomes bigger.
Yeah, so that, that was my question about special education and the buffer. So that's what, so it's not considered.
So the special education would simply, like, if we, if we fixed what I think we should fix in special education. Then Northampton, you know, would be more of a robust, like, sort of a, more of a steep incline. Because if we're allowing all of our districts to count the actual number of kids on IEPs. If we put that into the formula, that would necessitate, um, that Northampton get more money. You'd have to also, like, there's like a double edged sword, right? Because there'd be an increase in, in your foundation budget of which Northampton pays a part of, right? As you know, but ultimately it would benefit Northampton. Because your, your increase would be hot, more rapid. But school population is everything. And Student Opportunity Act reforms, and actually I should have councillor Jared mentioned the special education bill before the. Joint Committee on Education, so that has had a hearing. And, um. You know, it simply says that, and there's also the rural schools bill, so Rep Lay and I have the rural schools bill, that hearing is up. I think at the end of October, it hasn't been noticed yet, we'll get it out to all municipalities. That has the special education component in it. So I filed it as a separate bill with Rep Carey and then I filed this, the rural bill with Rep Lay. Um, and it has it in there because why? Well, because all the rural school superintendents said, special education's the way out of this. Cause we can't, um, we can't, we can't pay for the kids, where they want to, you want to, right? Um, but it's just so expensive.
Yeah. And, and would that funding come from the regular budget or from the fair share amendment funds or does it matter?
Doesn't really matter. I mean, it matters. Yeah, it matters because we want, for example, universal school meals. So as long as our revenue stays strong and our general fund can fund. You know, education, chapter 70, then we should do that. Um, and then pay for all the other stuff that we're paying for. But ultimately money, in that thing, in that idea that money is fungible and it's in a big pot. Doesn't really matter.
Well, you know, I encourage you to, to let us know when the optimal time is to put our support behind.
I will, we will, I think it, talking this through is very helpful. And I think we'll, uh, we'll certainly write you when the rural school bill is up. And the, just so you know, the rural school bill will have this special education component in it. will have this special education component in it. And I will tell you a hard truth. And I know, Mr. Chair, I should probably wrap up, right?
I am enjoying this conversation and I do have a couple of questions.
Okay. The, the very hard truth about special education in the Commonwealth is that the prevailing thought is that municipalities will use students on IEP, it's hard, even hard to say, as ways to pad their budget. Now, I think counsel knows, the school committee knows, I know, that's really far from the truth. Right now, we actually fight, face, our schools face a downward pressure, right? We know that every kid over a 16% threshold. And by the way, 16% isn't actually accurate. The, the state thinks that each kid on an IEP needs special education services for a quarter of a day. So it's a little bananas too, by the way. And, but that's something we have to fix. So it's like four times four is 16, right? So it's really, they, they assume that the threshold's actually four, and then we multiply that by four because it's a quarter of a kid and we get 16. They, we know that's not true, right? We know that there's downward pressure to deny kids IEPs because districts are terrified of the money that they have to expend. So it's short, they're just trying to survive and give the kids education. So the idea that they would be trying to use these kids to, to pad their budgets is just simply wrong. I, I haven't worked with your new superintendent, our new superintendent, as much as I, I look forward to. But I know Dr. Provost found that idea so repugnant because he believes in the least restrictive setting for students. It's good pedagogy. And, you know, so they don't, they don't want, if they don't have to give a kid services, they don't not want to give a kid services because they don't want, they want to, they're afraid of padding the budget. They don't want that kid to have service. They want the kid to be mainstream because that's the least restrictive setting in which the kid can thrive. And that's ultimately better for kids on IEPs. And so it's a very backward thought at the state, but it is absolutely the thought. And I'm, I'm sorry to tell you that, but that's true. So it really needs like city councils to be outraged that you're paying, you know, the amount you are when the state is assuming a threshold that is so far below. By the way, do you know who has a threshold at or below 16%? The W's, Wellesley, Winchester, you know, Wayland, Lexington, Concord, Arlington, Newton, they're wealthy, they're disproportionately wealthy and privileged, right? Who doesn't have those thresholds, right? Smaller, poorer towns and some larger communities, right? So it's like such nonsense. We know it correlates a lot with wealth and access. It's just.
Well, maybe if you brought in some illegal immigrants into your town, maybe they'd give you opportunities too.
I had a feeling that, that Mike.
Well, we, yes, we, I won't address that comment, Mr. Chair, unless, okay, very good.
We need to bring in more illegal immigrants into our town, I think. And then we need to.
Nobody's even doing anything for the white board.
And we need to use our taxpayers' money.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
No, no.
You don't get zoomed in on things very often.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, look, you know, honestly, these, they're great divergent thoughts that, you know, are welcome. I hear things in my inbox and in my own voicemail. Like the good person who made his views known. While we're doing this, Counsel of the Barge, I wanted you to know that I got your end of life options question. And I so much appreciate your advocacy, Counselor, on that. The hearing for that bill is Friday. It is a bill for the City Council to know. Counselor Barge has been a beautiful advocate for. It would allow people who have received a terminal diagnosis of six months or fewer to work with their doctor on an end of life plan on their own terms. It is a bill I'm proud to have filed for the last four years. So thank you for that. And the hearing's Friday. It's been passed out favorably twice. So I'm hoping that we, three times the charm and it gets over the line.
So I have just a couple of questions, kind of segments. One is that in one of the slides I saw, there was talk about economic development. I saw small businesses, creative tourism. And just being the rap representative I am, I have been thinking a lot and working on ways to kind of think about area regionally. You know, I love now in North Hampton, but I think that we have a lot of things in our surrounding communities. You know, so I've been trying to work on ways to, to make this whole area more alluring. I was wondering if you've been thinking about ways to connect the communities that you represent together and.
Yeah, no, I'm so happy you're thinking that. And North Hampton, as a regional tourism council, you know, Vince, and plays a great role. And I love that you're leading that too. So yes, I do think a lot about economic development and connecting communities, especially so far in arts and culture. Michael Bobbitt, who is the Executive Director of Mass Cultural, I've brought him to the, to the district now three times for tours that always involve the chambers and the bids and the arts and culture community. Actually, four times he's been here. And, you know, I do think about MCC funding as really critical to us in the wellbeing of everything from, you know, 33 Holly to Historic North Hampton, you know? They are a big economic engine for us. There is a new Travel Tourism Director, Kate Fox, and I'm working with Secretary Yvonne Howe to bring Kate to the region. And I was imagining, you know, linking the Greenfield Chamber and bid and Regional Tourism Council, the Amherst folks and the North Hampton folks in that conversation to have, to really talk about what North Hampton has to offer and the, what the region has to offer. And, you know, I think that's going to be really, really important as we both get to know Kate, but also Director Fox, but as we also, you know, get to know better Secretary Howe and Undersecretary Stolba, who love North Hampton and appreciate, you know, the district itself, but, you know, could and should be invited in to see us as a region. So Jessie Dean is the Executive Director of Franklin County Chamber. She's new-ish, not so new anymore. And then, of course, Claudia and Gabby, Gabrielle from Amherst, you know, all of those folks, plus of course Vince and Jillian. And you, you know, I'm excited to work with together as a, more of a team in the coming months.
I look forward to those moments as well.
That would be cool.
And then, so the other thing that had just been on my mind is that, you know, North Hampton is, is trying to be at the forefront of a, of a lot of things. And one thing that myself and Counsel Elkins are working on is this commission to study racialized harms for black residents and workers. And part of, one of our tasks that we were recently given was to look at what other communities are doing. And I was tasked looking at, at Boston, in fact, and they have a reparations task force there that kind of just started. And I was wondering, have you had any interaction with those folks or?
I have not. But I do know, so thank you for that work. I do, I have heard from other places in our district that are interested in reparations. Like certainly the Amherst folks are looking at this. There are folks in the sort of Leverett, Chuttsbury area looking at this and then now North Hampton. So I have been tuned in to the efforts locally. I, I am not tuned in to what Boston is doing. I'm more tuned in to the, there's a statewide movement that folks like Senator Miranda Liz Miranda has been helping to lead, who's, she's a fabulous senator. And we are really lucky to have her working. So I, I'm more tuned in there than I am into the city of Boston under Mayor Wu, who is also fabulous. But, you know, any connection the city wants me to make, right? That's my job. So I could help find out in the Wu administration who the right people are or join you. So just you simply follow up with an email to the Senate address and we can get working on that.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Sure.
I did want to give a little time, if you have just a little more time. I know that there are a couple of counselors who are here remotely. And would any of the counselors who are remote like to ask any questions? Counsel LeBarge?
Yep, thank you. Senator, I want to thank you for being at our meeting this evening. It's a pleasure to hear the breakdown of the budget. I've learned a lot from this, this evening. But I also want to thank you for who you are. I have to say, when I looked at the listing that you presented this evening, constituents and services, in my heart, I want to thank you. I invited you to come to see a resident of mine last year who's worked all his life, all his lives, saved all his money and never asked anybody for anything. I went to you and I stated to you that I needed you to come to see a resident of mine who was diagnosed with cancer very badly. You came and I told you before we went in the house, your eyes are going to tell you everything. And I always say that. And when you stayed there, you heard my resident talk. You saw the condition that he was in and the house that he lives in. I got him a new roof. I, our previous state rep, Peter Kocot, Senator Rosenberg, you were there, you saw the condition. And that meant a lot to me, to see the senator come, which my resident was so happy that you came to see him. And he still talks about you. And then when you left the house, you said to me outside, you know, Counselor, your eyes do tell it all. And that you needed to do more about visiting residents. And that's what this is all about. No matter if you're a state rep, a senator, you need to get out and see residents and see the needy people that need help in our city and probably other communities also. But I just wanted to let you know that he talks about you a lot, a lot. And that means a lot to me as his counselor. And I want to thank you, Senator Comforvert, for who you are. Thank you.
Well, Counsel LeBarge, honestly, that is deeply moving to me. And, you know, you, like, you know, when Counsel Nash pointed me to a problem, you point me to constituents who need justice and need deeper levels of service and respect. And, you know, when I was there, most of the conversation, Counsel of the Barge was about you and your help to this constituent. So thank you for all you do and your service, truly. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Yes, Counsel Jared.
That's okay. Yeah, I don't know how long we were planning on going. I feel like we could probably go all night. But I have, there are so many things to talk to you about. I wanted to circle back to something else you mentioned relating housing and transit. And, you know, we've been, North Hampton, we've gained about 1,000 people and about population loss over 10 years from 20, the 2010 census to the 2020 census. And sustainable development is very important to us. We've recently passed zoning changes that allow for increased development housing, of housing in the downtown areas. And so I guess my question, out east, we see transit oriented development around areas. You know, we know that in, that folks who are living in the downtown areas are much less likely to have a car or have fewer cars to use transit. But our transit here is not sufficient to really build a life around like you could in Eastern Mass in some of the areas. And so how do we get, thinking long term here, how do we get, you know, the increased population without getting the increased traffic? And as I see it, the way we have to do that is to build, is to create a, a city that, where you can build your life or build much of your life without having to use a private car for everything. And, but there's a lot of chicken and egg going on. Where you don't have the transit, so you have to rely on the car. You, you can't, we can't build the, the housing and because we have to supply parking and that takes up a bunch of space. So there's a lot of things like that. And I'm curious, just kind of your long term thoughts on, on the subject.
Such an important question, Counselor. So the governor's coming out with a housing bond bill. I believe we'll see it very soon. I hope she addresses some of these questions by things like allowing cities to raise money locally. I have a bill, a luxury real estate transfer tax that would give North Hampton the option of adopting it as a local revenue source. I'm hoping the governor sees fit to include that in her housing bill as just among a whole toolkit of financial options for North Hampton. But you're right that it's a chicken and an egg. I will say in this, in this last budget, we, the legislature appropriated record money for RTAs for the first time.
Yeah.
You know, RTAs will have a pretty astounding level of funding, including PVTA and FRTA, which are key for our part of the Connecticut River Valley, also MRTA and, and the Berkshire Service. And I'm hoping with that, that we see a great deal of innovation, like we're doing up in Franklin County with those earmarks I was able to snag. They're doing this really unbelievable public Uber essentially that is really making it possible. Now, it's a small pilot, so it's for a very small, small-ish pilot. It's for a cohort of service users. So people going to GCC, people needing healthcare at the Community Health Center, people involved in community action programs. So like a contained group of people, but they're using it. They're using it multiple times a day. It's pretty damn darn cheap. Sorry, everybody, it's pretty darn cheap. And I know Senator Curse is on the, pretty darn cheap. And I think we have to see that as one of the solutions for us here, right? Because our, but, you know, the fact that we don't have night, you know, credible enough night service, weekend service, enough stops, enough frequency, enough, you know, intersecting county routes, us to Hamden and Franklin and them to each other, you know? So that's really makes it very difficult, as you've already said, to, to try to not have a car. And getting back to the governor's housing bond bill, I, I hope there's other pieces of policy in there that will incentivize a denser housing development that we, in the tax package that we passed, that I talked about very briefly, we put in money for the low income housing tax credit. That's a really important tax credit. It's built the gables, it helped build the gables in Amherst. It's building the Wilson Department Store up in Greenfield. The nursing home will use it, Valley CDC will use it when we get that finally funded from housing and livable communities. They should, should have been funded already. So we need, we need that kind of money as well to be much more significantly funded in the bond bill along with housing policy that will help local communities raise, but also help there to be a denser infill. I believe in, that we need that for all of our communities. And I think, I think that's kind of the one-two punch you're talking about. More money, an ability to go denser. And then the kind of infrastructure money that's for, our community is out here, it's water sewer, right? 30% of the Commonwealth is on septic and wells. That 30% is out here, not here, not in North Hampton. But, you know, we need infrastructure and transit and the grid, the, the grid and cell in order to be able to densify the housing. So that has to be part of what she's thinking about. I think she is.
Yeah. And is there, the question for that housing bond bill, do you know how much of that will support the capital A affordable housing, that less than 80% of area median income? And versus how much will support people who are above that?
Yeah, the workforce housing.
And, you know, we're not seeing the mechanisms to, to fund that to, and, and to keep it. And, you know, we're not seeing the mechanisms to to fund that to and and to keep it to to maintain affordability at something that's greater than eighty percent, which is desperately needed here.
Yep. So in the Senate's, in the House and Senate's tax package, there was a what's called H DIP. It's a workforce housing for gateway cities. So we did invest in that. It's pretty controversial, actually, because H DIP in itself doesn't have an affordability mandate. So people are worried that that's going to go to all middle and upper middle working houses, working homes. So that's something to think about, but I I believe the governor is has got to be thinking of both, you know, really affordable, low income, middle income workforce housing in as in her toolkit. And I think she, you know, because we just did something for H DIP for the gateway cities. I'm I'm hoping that she sees the rest of the Commonwealth in her bond bill. But here's an here's an invitation, and I I can't believe I didn't say this to you, counselor. North Hampton should say, you know, when that bond bill comes out, if it works for you. You know, and and, you know, certainly Pamela Schwartz in the Western Mass Network to End Homelessness is a, I find her a great resource. Keith Ferry is a supreme asset, brain in this space from Wayfinders. So certainly, you know, we will have some time, because the housing bond bill will have to go to housing, Joint Committee on Housing. And we just brought Senator Edwards here, Lydia Edwards, so she could see the challenges that we face. She's unbelievable. So many people from our area, including Valley CDC, you know, just sort of, and Keith sort of poured their brains into Senator Edwards in preparation for this housing bond bill. So we'll have to go to housing and then I'll have to go to bonding. So two joint committees. So there'll be time for North Hampton to tell me and tell those committees, hey, this works, this doesn't work for us.
Yeah.
And so, because it'll have to go to two committees and then it'll have to come to the floor and where I can file amendments, hopefully we get it in before, right? It's always better, by the way, to bake it in to the base than fight it out on the floor, but we can do that too. So let's, let's look at what you, let's look for what you are asking us to look for here. You know, and have that could be one of the, yeah, one more piece of follow up for the city council. Hey, Joe, this doesn't work for us. This is what would work for us, or you could testify directly. You know, and flag that.
I would suggest that, and particularly in issues of housing, that this committee is is an excellent place to have those discussions. So I, Senator, I would encourage you and we'll be on the lookout too. But if if something is something coming, if something's coming down the pike that has a particular, is going to have a particular impact on housing and and policy around that, and we will have a take on it, or that or that we might have, you know, that we might have a take on. You know, we would take it up in a community resources meeting and 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 really get wonky about it, I think. I think there's enough interest in that, that we would, we would get into the into the weeds on something like that.
Well, I mean, it's coming, it's coming probably this week.
Okay.
Okay.
I I don't know for sure, because I'm not the governor, but true, simply the person who serves you in the Senate. But but I think do take a look at that. This is my invitation to you to take a look at that and then sound alarm bells or cheers, depending. Like keep this, take the, you know, fix this. And again, if if this if this committee wanted to send that directly in, you know, in writing from the council, right? That's also super welcome. Or the mayor, again, you know, I would defer to you all to know exactly how to work best with Mayor Shara.
Yeah. Well, I would, you know, I don't know what November looks like for this committee, but potentially could, you know, discuss the housing bond bill and see where we go from there in the November agenda.
I like it. Yeah. I just want to thank you again, Senator Comfort, for joining us, for educating us, for doing all the hard work that you do. And I hope that this will be the first of many visits to community resources or this way. So we can learn more, because there's always stuff to learn.
Well, it was my honor, truly, and thank you for having me, Mr. Chair and Committee. And, you know, really, I will come back as much as you ask me. It'll be, it would be really fun and I really like Counselor Elkins's suggestion of. Your suggestion of, you know, if the council sees fit in your next incarnation to say, okay, you, you know, one of you, you have to, you know, go to the, you know, again, working with the mayor, go to these mayor meetings or or have a separate meeting or whatever you want, whatever the council wants and the mayor wants, I'm happy to do. And Counselor Jarrett, I I if it's impossible to believe, but I don't have the special education table at a place where I can pull it up. My doc is not opening and I don't want to futz with it anymore and take my attention away from the meeting. I will get it for you as a piece of follow up. So it's, it's, for some reason, it's like it's saying that it's not, I'm not able to open this file. So I'm going to write myself a note.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you again, thank you for your patience. Well, that brings us to the last few items. There are no items referred to this committee. Does anyone have any new business they want to bring up? Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Now that everyone's here, do we need to take a roll call vote or can we just? I will, I.
I.
I'll favor. That was perfect. Thank you again, everyone.